Good evening. I'd call the Alton Board Selectmen's Meeting to order October 5th, 2020 at 6 o'clock. If you please all stand for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. Mr. Paul Rochelle.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the people of our country, what we stand for, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Until further notice to keep our members staff safe, they comply with our say 91-1 state emergency and the government's orders. Restrictions on public gatherings, the town of Alton has moved from in-person meetings to remote audio participation meeting. To remotely attend the meeting, audio and video is at our website, www.alton.nh.gov. On the day of the meeting, for instructions, telephone the Selectmen's Office, 603-875-2113 or 603-875-0229. There continues to be no public input at this time. Gentlemen, if I can have the approval of the agenda?
A approval of the agenda as written, October 5th, 2020?
Okay. Which was made by Paul Rochelle to prove the agenda is submitted on October 5th, 2020. Second by Mr. Whitman. Any discussion? I'll poll the board, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Pointworth, yes, vote is in the affirmative. Move on to emergency management update. We have Chief Bodine here tonight to bring us up to date. And the chief is on the phone if we need it. Then the chief is live. Good evening, Chief. Chief Bodine and Chief Heath.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, good evening, sir.
And John, excuse me, John, if you want to come up and squeeze in there between if you can find six feet, you can. No, we still don't have six feet here.
I'm right in the middle. All right, so, as you know, the town has actually spent very well through this entire pandemic. You guys had asked us to consider opening the meetings back up, we took that into consideration. During that time, we actually had a spike in cases. In a short, like, three-day period, moved from zero cases to nine cases in time. That has gone back down to two cases. So, those nine people did a very good job of isolating, they did not contaminate the town, they did not get their neighbors sick, so. That's the best we can ask for, best-case scenario there. So, when we're down to only two cases, we decided that it is not in our misinterest to move forward and open the board select meeting up to vote participation. With that said, as you can see, everything's had its spread out pre-staged. There's some tape on the floor where chairs should be, six feet apart in all directions. That brings the audience participation down to 16 people.
That's a good norm.
That's hugely more. With that said, though, if more show up, there are two options, we either have to close the meeting if nobody is willing to go back. If they're willing to go back, we have to explain them that we do remote access and then recess until they can get back to remote access. And then the alternative could be...
They come in, like, all in a crowd? We just throw them out?
If you can't just throw, as soon as you make somebody feel like... As soon as somebody feels like they don't belong here or they can't be here, you have to shut down the meeting. So, the best thing is keep it organized. Either the chairman, somebody has to moderate the people coming in and just be aware, we still want temperature taken and we still want the question here done. We recommend masks, but we're not going to require masks. Hand sanitizer, anything where the agendas are, is probably the best course of action there. But, like I said, if you have more than 16, you're going to have to revisit that. You might be able to put one more, like, here, but then after that, you're going to have to send it back because of remote access. And if no one's willing to go do remote access, you have to close down the meeting.
How many can we put in the museum?
If you want to, like, simulcast in the museum?
Simulcast in the museum, like John has done in the past for the plating board. When he stood over there and monitored that.
Do you remember the number there? Because I'll tell my head, I do not remember.
I believe it's definitely six or eight, that there's not a lot over there.
Really, then you're going to have to have somebody that's always...
Right, I understand that, yeah.
Truly, the best course of action is to show people how to remote access from home, and that's only if you have more than 16 in the audience.
Well, if it comes to that, that we all of a sudden get influx of people, then we're probably going to have to come back to remote access anyways.
Well, we never know. Normally, we don't have that many in the audience, normally you have up to six, normally we've got up to six.
And, you know, if some of you guys can revisit, like, if there's a hot subject, something that you think is going to bring a lot of people in, then it would maybe be hard for somebody to open up the museum just for that, not just to have it.
When we have a hearing, we have more people than anyway at the time, but a regular select board meeting, we might have six or seven people. You know, and maybe when we make the announcement that we opened up the meetings, we just say it's first come, first served, total of 16 people. And just make, say it right off the top.
And then we still might have to shut down if somebody wants to make a thing out of it, but at least we said that's the way we wanted to do it. Well, the thing is, it's not so much to make a thing out of it, they have no way to do remote access, you'd have to shut it down.
Right.
Because if they have no way to do remote access, because they don't have a computer or something, or a cell phone that would allow them to do that, you'd have to shut the meeting down, so.
The only other thing we ask, to help make this happen, allocate resources, is that as this happens, we work on shutting down the west side. That allows those resources to come here and do the cleaning, allow the people to be, have a little more time to get here and get cleaned.
No, when, John, when we usually shut, we shut them down pretty quick, don't we?
No, you don't shut the west side down.
The west side doesn't usually shut down.
East side, just the east side. East side's closed.
But I see.
East side's already closed.
I would recommend you close it. Opening the west side for special events that are happening on the ice situation or things like that, so if there's an event happening in the area, open it up. If needed necessary, just keep it open on the weekends, do that as well, but otherwise, that'd be a nice way to have resources here.
Mr. Kim?
After this weekend, we could close that to just weekends anyways, after the foliage weekend, that's this weekend, so.
So. You're in the green guy again. Have we ever thought about that stage area up here? I don't know what's there, so.
There's... There's a little bit of a necker. There's a small hole.
Really?
Yeah.
Josh is a hat.
Still in storage.
Yeah.
See, I've never seen it.
Well, you've never been through the building.
Curtain's always been closed.
All right, what do we think, put the selectman up there and increase some more chairs? Always want to talk down.
Oh, I think we could.
At this point, we recommend just the selectmen's meeting, make sure that goes well, and if that goes well, turn it up to the, some of the other boards. Let's still leave a balance, pay for resources for cleaning.
We haven't any trouble getting cleaning supplies?
I think that has come back on board. Stuff is a little more expensive than it's been in the back.
Oh, everything.
Thanks.
Popular, of course.
And we're going through it faster.
I just had an argument with the lumber company, because they're going to take a 43% jump, which is why, they said, well, Wild Place is out west, I says, yeah, but we use all eastern white line.
The mills, the mills are just gouging the market.
Yep, they are, exactly right.
Exactly what they're going to do.
It's going to get worse before it gets better.
Oh, starting to go. Chief, I appreciate it, but I guess I would recommend to you or to the board that we wait till November 1st. I don't want to prolong any longer, but I want to get through the foliage season for the restrooms in the bay.
Yeah.
I don't want to tax.
No, that makes sense.
I don't want to tax, I don't want to tax the bay out behind the restrooms anymore than what they hire, but it's because we have to bring the staff here to concentrate more on this. Even though it's one night, they can clean the next day, whatever, I would just like to see us wait till the 1st of November so we get through the peak foliage season, and then we're sure all the warm weather's going.
One night, because you're going to have, if you open up this, it's going to eventually open up planning.
Well, eventually, so right now, but right now, it's just the board of select.
We don't want to take, we want to take the concept, make sure it's working, also keeping the remote access available.
So, I would recommend the 1st of November to my board, I don't know how they're going to...
Yeah, that makes sense, too, with that, I think that would be good.
That would be good.
And then opening up weekends, like you said, the weekends, and especially during events on the ice or anything like that.
Weekends, you'd have to, because of what goes on at the bay, and plus, you're still going to have hikers out past that. We really don't want to go on the side of the road, especially on Jesus Valley Road or Reed Road or anything else.
Every road, everywhere.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, it'll be nice in the public, we'd be glad to hear it, too.
And the other big question that was out there was trick or treat. And, you know, we'd be foolish to think that we're going to stop trick or treating from that thing anyways.
Thank you. I had my sign all ready to shoot.
The plan is to, you know, have it as usual, but just get the information and safety guidelines out there so people just understand, I mean, it's still around. And one of the best ways, best practices to be safe. In some spots, yeah. Again, we're doing very well.
Well, the kids will wear masks.
Speaking of kids, how do we make out with the school?
Oh, they're closed this week.
The school is closed.
That's right, yeah, back to remote learning.
The league, they're planning to open it back up after the holiday.
Yeah.
Was there one positive there at the school?
And was it a staffer kid?
A kid.
What was kid?
It was, I was told it was one of the teachers.
My wife knows just one.
She had just one. Pretty bad. Better than I thought it would be.
That's good, and, you know, they reacted appropriately, they did the right thing, and they're taking this time to get it cleaned, do some tracing, and get kids back in, so.
So, wait till after Columbus Day, and then start again. That could have been a nightmare over there.
Well, Rochester shut it down for a few days, and they're back open again. Well, if you think about it, through the report, you also had one at Prospect Mountain, it was in your report, right? Prospect didn't shut down, like, who knows why?
Yeah.
That was in your report, but the only thing, what I talked to you about earlier, Chief, maybe if you could maybe lighten the riot on it, maybe sometime during the week, if you talk to him. So, I think the school, on this case, could have handled a couple of things differently. I think a lot of parents sat home worried, wondered if they're going to get a call from Health and Human Services. Really, it shouldn't be coming from Health and Human Services, it should be coming from the school, not saying that the child was contaminated, but that child was in the same classroom.
They should have had a letter sent.
So, they could do self-monitor.
Talk with the school about, you know, their handling of the notification, but the contract tracing is done.
Through Health and Human Services.
But I think it opens, gives parents that ease and allows them to watch the kid, see if there's any changes so they can get it early.
Right.
But it just goes more to self-monitoring, like you said earlier in the season, the group did. There was a couple of cases, you said it goes to self-monitoring at this point, and just keep checking your temperature every day, washing your hands, and everything else. But at least it allows, it might give the parents a lead, and sitting there all weekend wondering if they're going to get a call from Health and Human Services because their child was in that room. Especially when elementary, where you got, it just ran back and forth in front of one another, because I think the letter said you'll be notified if your child was within six feet of this individual and has spent more than 10 minutes interacting with it. So, I'm sitting there thinking, elementary classroom, 10 minutes, that could happen all day long, but, but anyways, that was just my concern on that. Anything else for the chief or John?
I think it's great the way they mapped it out.
They've done good.
So, the only thing I got to ask, I live on Jesus Valley Road, and I'm not looking for any preference, but my neighbors at the end of the road posted their property this weekend. At the Saturday, with the run-ins, with people just going through their door yards, not, and even the neighbors trying to talk to them, say, this is private property, you know, we've asked you to stay off, and they say, we don't care, we're coming through.
Really?
So, I guess maybe what the town might need to look at is that the end of Jesus Valley Road, when you go up the hill there, it's actually a private drive. Maybe putting, letting those folks put a saw was across there saying, private drive, do not enter. But that part of the trail has been closed now because they just had enough out there this weekend. There was, I believe, 40 cars at one time parked down Jesus Valley Road, and for you, Chief, it would have been hard for you to get a piece of apparatus, such as...
I believe having the parking lot closed just made it...
Well, the parking lot was open this weekend.
It was open, conservation is working on Jesus Valley. They're working on it right now, my fact, that you get to the end, there's an old logging road right there.
It's old rain road that goes off mountain.
And we're working on...
We have, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Chief.
Sorry about that, I just to add a little bit on the parking issue, I have addressed that with the patrol supervisors and my people as far as stepping up their efforts over there. Based on the agreement we made with the state on the no parking signs on the guardrails, I had them focusing pretty hard on enforcement of those to get the, you know, and I think part of that enforcement pushed people to these outer areas. I know some of it was, you know, because of the parking law being closed, but I think the enforcement as well for the parking on the guardrails kind of, you know, got around quick. I noticed some people put some cardboard signs up talking about fines that they received. So, I think, what's that?
I hate to say that, I would request the town and my neighbors along with the public, request a sign, no parking anywhere on them. Because we don't want to be unfriendly, but we don't want to, they don't want to pick up trash from these hikers. I mean, litter up there, terrible this weekend, and why folks want to go into a neighboring community and bring stuff in and leave it there for neighbors to have to pick up is just beyond me, I just can't understand. But no, that's great, I'm glad you're going to look into that a little bit further, but I'm sure it's not just Jesus Valley Road, I'm sure it's the one up on the mountain, and I'm sure it's the one up in West Alton, too.
Jesus Valley, we're working, getting the parking lot out at the end.
Well, I understand that, that came before the board already.
Well.
And Wes Wilder just came in and said that people are going to, are going to the Forest Society to donate the land.
The property owner up there was gracious enough to contact the fire department to let us know, didn't discover what they're...
Yeah, good.
Still having access.
Very good. Okay, anything else, sir, these gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, there was, I'm sorry to interrupt, there was one other thing that I forgot to talk to Chief Bodine about before he went up to the meeting today, but there was some mention about having a brief update as far as finances go related to COVID-19?
Yes, sir.
It had been brought, I believe the board had discussed and talked about some shortfalls, especially with the solid waste department. Or not necessarily shortfalls, but overrunning with money and questions about the CARES Act and what we could submit for and not. So, we have put in our last phase of the CARES Act submission. As you know, the town was granted roughly 126,000 was our cap under the CARES Act of the Gopher Fund. So, we submitted this last round, they had also allowed towns to include wages for police and fire first responders who are constantly at risk of exposure based on their job descriptions and, you know, the need to respond to these calls in people's homes. So, based on that, we were able to go ahead and put that in, and I believe our last submission was just over 222,000. Now, that's well over our cap, but what that will do is the town will recoup all of that money back into, the plan is to put it into a revenue line under the emergency management line. But that money, as you know, the wages and other items have been accounted for in the operating budget. So, that money, as it goes back into the emergency management revenue line, is going to be created for those payments coming back in. That money can be used, that excess money will be used to offset other expenses in other areas that, you know, have taken a hit throughout this state of emergency.
I thought all payments had to go in the general fund. What? I thought on the end, it always had to go through general fund.
It does, but I've moved your COVID-related expenses, so we kind of wash those, because those aren't truly our expenditures. But there will be leftover revenues, that he's right, it will fit in the revenue line, because it's not going to wash out your wages, because that was something that was budgeted. All your other expenditures that you've had to pay that were not a budgeted item, you know, your repairs to your bathroom to make them all modified and stuff, all of that you can wash. But the rest, and we have received our final payment, so we've gotten the total 126,040.
This is the final payment?
That's the total of all of it. The final payment, the check was like 99,000.
What's, so what's the 222,000?
That's what I submitted. 30 days, you're allotted, right? They only gave you the max up to the 126,000.
He's hoping, from my understanding, his chief is hoping that he's going to get up to the 222.
No.
That's not what I took out of that, I took that, that we'd be recouped all.
No, I submitted the whole 226 in case some of the things they shot back and were not accepted, then you could, they could fill it in so we could get our allotted total.
Yeah, we purposely submitted over the amount based on what we had, we submitted every expense that we had because, you know, you're not sure whether or not something's not going to be included or they're going to kick something back, and we wanted to make sure that we would receive at least the full 126 for that we were allotted.
Okay. So, you went high just to get the medium?
Yep.
Right. Well, we included everything, even the kitchen sink, we put everything in that was possibly, that could possibly be included with the notion that we knew they weren't going to give, grant us over that 126.
Okay, we have nothing left.
Well, what I was, what I was trying to get at is that by the inclusion of the payroll-related items for first responders, that was a huge chunk of that. And they're allowing that even though those are budgetary items, meaning those weren't, aren't necessarily shortfalls, except for some of the overtime and different things like that. But that leaves, there's a buffer in there that will be left at the end, it's not going to be, we're not running those lines over in the operating budget, is what I mean.
Now, when do we stop the payments to the, on the extra money to the?
First responders?
Yeah.
That's, that's already stopped, that stopped a while ago. That was only an eight-week program.
And that was separately funded?
Right. That wasn't out of the Gopher Fund. Anything else?
Just done.
Nope, I just wanted to touch on that, so you knew there would be some money there to help cover that.
Thank you.
Anything else for the gentleman or young lady? She was trying to, Liz tried to...
One question.
This one.
In regards to restaurants, and this is not to do with the town, it's private, but where they're putting up shields, if you will, Plexiglas or whatever they're doing, does that get inspected by anyone, by the police department, fire department?
That would be, that would only be by, the inspection would be based on town ordinance, if you have town ordinance to have it inspected.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have any of that right now.
Basically, it's required for restaurants to do if they want to go to full capacity, but...
Like, the city of Rochester, the health officers going out inspecting all the breaks of the restaurants.
So, if they choose to do that, they should get in touch with the health officer to go and inspect them, okay?
They did want to, just for insurance purposes.
Well, yeah, and some of them are choosing to do it, some of them choosing not to put barricades, but there are some, and you know. But they should get in contact, and I had asked the chief about that, the police chief about that, if somebody would take a look at any one of them and just to make sure that they're doing them correctly.
But can any restaurants go to full capacity now?
They can, but between the booths that are close to each other, they have to put that barrier up.
I'm just wondering, because Circle Dine or Circle Restaurant down in Napsum, one day I'm in there, it's every other table, the next day it was every table because they had a big crowd. And I thought, are they breaking rules here or what, you know? Okay.
Because the two restaurants, as you know, I built 10 of those barricades for that very purpose, between the seats of the booths behind, and it's actually affixed to those. So, you'll be getting a call.
Anything else, folks? Not Chief Heath, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Chief Bowden, thank you. John, thank, please, thank you. Thank you. Do you have anything to add?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir, have a good evening.
You, too.
Next one is submission of public comments, questions, concerns, email Peter Farrell and Gene Hart. Do I need, I guess I have to read this into where we said we would?
Yes, and we're waiting for responses from Highway and Police on the request for the signage and stuff.
Dear Selectmen, Gene and I were very pleased to see the recently repainting of the double yellow lines on the eastly side of Stockbridge Corner Road. We thank the town for the safety improvement, additional concerns. There's an interesting note that the lines on the westerly side of Stockbridge Corner Road are still clearly visible without repainting. If my memory serves me correctly, they were painted at nearly the same date as those on the eastly side of Stockbridge Corner. The worn lines to the east are evidence of the volume of traffic passing between Route 11 and Route 28, seven days a week. In addition, average speed at this traffic travels, I am sure the police front load test is well above the 30 mile per hour limit, compounding out safety concerns and recent removal of the six-ton limit on the road that had been in effect for close to 20 years. The effect of additional through truck traffic on the road is significant. Numerous places, the edge of the pavement is breaking away and has narrowed, paved travel line has lowered seven and a half feet. I recently followed a large delivery truck using the Stockbridge Corner Road bypass, and for most of its journey has straddled the double yellow line. More broadly, the recent extension crack seal treatment, the road also indicated that the upgrade of the road in the last decade was not intended to uphold the current traffic demands. Remedying these issues, what I expect cost tax payers vault in a substantial sum of what has essentially become a state highway bypass. This would be an expenditure for something that we, we and most likely the majority of our Stockbridge Corner Road neighbors have no use or desire to have happen. We request consideration of the following safety improvements. Restoration of a six-ton note through trucking limit, reduction of the speed limit to 25 miles per hour, addition of signage for, but not limited to, residential area yielding caution for pedestrians, bicycles, sea tractor crossing. And while we have your attention about our neighborhood safety issues, we also encourage you to consider extending the 25 mile an hour speed limit to all town roads, including Main Street. And a reduction of the speed limit for the folks on Route 28 south of the circle. Make our roads safer for the people to get out and walk, run, ride, and save more lives than will more pavement. We plan to consider these issues on the 6th date, we would appreciate a notification as such, thank you for your time and commitment to serve our community. So, I understand where they're coming from on Stockbridge Corner Road, because when the DOT, Fire and Safety is sitting out on Route 11, a lot more trucks will go down Stockbridge Corner Road so they can bypass the safety inspection from DOT.
Yeah, but that road is...
Hi, can I finish? So, they bypass that a lot, and that road is highly used between non-residents that come from Farmington, Rochester, Concord, and trucks. I understand the concerns about the safety, my only concern is they go to six-ton road limit, an oil truck can't go down that road. So, when someone needs oil, are you going to tell them that they can't go down that road? You can't have it for some and not for all of them. So, I guess that's one of my concerns, and a few years ago, the Selectmen voted to pull them all up because the state statute, someone had quoted that they couldn't put six-ton road limits because of the highway block grant. Mr. Robins and I talked the other day, and reading through Title XX, which is 20 Transportation Chapter 231, there's nothing limiting the Selectmen's powers in it. So, I mean, I can understand it, and this letter states that 25 miles an hour through Main Street, we could never do that, that's a state road, the classified road that is maintained by the state, that would have to be petitioned to the state.
Right.
But we could. Town roads to 25 all-town roads, I wouldn't, I would like to see 15 on my road, because you can't pass two cars on my road at 25 miles an hour. So that...
But Jesus Valley.
Yeah, Jesus Valley and there's some other roads in town, you can't pass two cars.
You have road standards?
My road is 25, by classified standards, it's a state in the Hancha. Let's go fast on that road. All-town roads are 25 miles an hour unless the town goes and does a safety speed check.
Yeah, two roads and all those 25, on the Durham.
Yeah.
And one up on Alt Mountain, the rest of them are all 30 miles an hour.
They're all posted, though.
Posted at 30, 30 miles, we only have two 25 mile an hour roads.
Route 11D was 25.
Yes, we've only got two in Alton that are 25, the rest are all 30 mile an hour, because we went through this a few years ago about this. And oil trucks, the six-ton limit signs, they don't even follow them in the spring because they don't have to, because they deliver over the, even on mud, even through the mud season.
But even people say on Stockbridge Corner are taking deliveries from Home Depot.
Rocks.
Oh, it's brutal. Or doing a septic system, they're still allowing, they got to get over.
You got to allow them, by the way, you bet. You would be surprised how many tractor trailers.
Oh, I know how many go to gossip, yeah.
Isn't the through trucking sign?
Well, it should say no through trucking, but the problem is, Alton's lying, nobody would notice that... You, nobody would notice the no through trucking until you actually pass through the dirt and once you're in there, you can't, there's no place to turn around.
Gotta go first halfway down the road.
This is one of the problems towns create for themselves. Is you're on a town line like that, all of a sudden you get to the next road, says no through trucking or six ton road limit. Where does a tractor trailer turn around that's forty eight feet long?
You can't back out all that way because that's quite a way it has to continue.
Well, how does it work? On, uh, Bay Hill Road? What about no through trucking?
Yeah, but that's.
Where do they turn around there?
They can't. Alton, Alton, but they're on the end of the roads. They didn't, one yard.
Right at the end of the road.
Beginning of the road on the gym, like coming across. Down towards Stockbridge, you have three quarters of the way down onto Stockbridge before Alton takes over. And then the sign would have to be there at our line. And then there's no place to turn around there because you're already half the course of the way down the road.
And you can put local traffic up and no through trucking, but you don't have to have an officer there all the time patrolling.
Up to the very top of the hill, yeah.
I mean, I understand, I understand their concerns. Um, the missing new is put the speed limit sign back down there again. The flashing one. Um, that way there gives them a little more awareness that the police are looking at it and observation of it. As far as the six ton limit, I would like to have the town attorney look into this. And there was a big to do, I think you, you weren't on the board yet. I think Lawrence sat here, Dave Hussey sat here, Sidney was here. Uh, Lou Lacourse was here. When they had this big discussion come up with all the roads, because remember old Wolf River Hole Road was posted coming off of twenty eight down in the village that had a six ton limit on it year round. And all of a sudden the signs just got taken off after a big meeting. There was a public hearing here. A lot of construction guys showed up, a lot of local, local companies showed up and protested over the six ton limits. Um, so we do have to maintain and look out for the, uh, our investment in our roads. So they can't keep getting broken up.
Virgil, I wonder if it's worth asking. Ask a new Durham, if we, if we sign up on their end.
It's a possibility.
And our end. They know through trucking, but it's worth it on both ends. Cause they might, I mean, they just had to redo Valley Road because of it. So they, they might be thinking the same thing, but like I was saying, well, we can't stop half. So it might be worth just talking, don't ask them.
Send a letter to the town of New Durham. I mean, I have no problem with, I have no problem with through trucking.
And stop all trucking as well. The flashing light with that.
Stop all trucking. I, I can't, I can't see.
The speed sign, well, you're not, I don't think you're ever gonna stop it all.
No, because, but you're gonna have the local guys, they put up six ton limit. That's rebuilding a septic system or having a, some of like A.J. Foscom in with chambers or anything like that, thirty over the weight. So, I mean, it's gonna, certain, you're gonna have to allow. Yeah, the idea of the weight is the through trucks, the tractor trailers. Did he use them for the shot cat?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean. They're using it for a shot cat. That's like Bay Hill Road.
They've been doing.
But they, we don't really enforce it. A lot of the problem. It's hard to enforce it. You can't have a police officer sitting on every.
Looks like I asked if we could put the speed limit sign on the hill, but it's too steep. They don't dare leave it on the hill. They haven't crashed down the hill. Uh, or, or try and tie it to the tree or anything.
A lot of the problem on Valley Road in Stockbridge is because the GPS for the truck.
Tells the GPS. It does. And I've asked a lot of people, when it's exactly them, the GPS of people that don't realize they, and they're committed once, once they start.
Right through there. But the best thing is to get with New Durham, see if we get that.
No, it's because that would probably help them dope. That would help.
So the, so the chief, Liz just told me earlier that the chief and highway agent is wa- looking into this also? Waiting for response back to them?
Yep.
This letter here, gentlemen, if any of you want a copy, uh, Mr. Robbins did give it to me. I did review it. Everybody wants a copy of this? Just feel free to grab it or ask Mary to get it up. I'll leave it in the office. Liz, do you have anything to say to this?
Um, I just wanna clarify, do you want something from Attorney Sessler or not yet?
I do. I would like to see if the town posts roads where state money and federal money are involved. To limit the traffic and the size so we can get that question answered once and for all by legal opinion. Cause you got all these coffee shop lawyers. Corner lawyers and post office lawyers. Um, then you have the Selectmen's point of view, so, which isn't always accurate. So you can have a legal opinion. Can the town post beside springtime year round rows, six ton road limit? No through trucking? Uh, if federal, state and federal monies are involved. Does that sound fine with you, gentlemen?
Sounds good.
All right. Would you also entertain the idea of reaching out to the town administrator in New Durham to see if they would like entertain the idea of possibly putting up, if this is allowed, possibly putting up no through trucking, starting at their.
Yeah, it's worth a try.
Yeah, cause it probably tears up their end as well. I mean, to, to an extent, we got the same situation. Which is probably why it's so busted up because locals know, you know, if you got a big truck, you wanna make a left on the one forty. It's tight there. You use school street, it's a lot easier, you know?
Well, I have it on my road too because the hill on twenty eight, they're all taking a whiff of them trucks. And wheel is traded, they go right up a wolf road.
So next time we bring this up, maybe we should contact Mr. Farrell. And, um, and then Ken will be available if needed, need be, but we'll wait to hear back from his response.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll set up another appointment on this once he gets legal. Hello, so he can join us in the conference.
Nice to let him know that we're working on it, that.
Okay, anything else in this, gentlemen? Okay, if not, we'll move over to appointments with Mr. Shibley. Shibley's at the pier, lease agreement renewed. As you stated, we agreed to this, um, he would like to go with the new lease coming up. Also, the exception would like to have a twenty year lease. Would like to be sure that his daughter can take over as him and Amy are starting to step aside. Uh, that's not really allowed in here in the current lease. Would also like to have an update of pictures and drawings of the land and structures so we don't run into the same problem we ran into earlier this spring. I think though, my request would be instead of a selectman during the town administrator and the code enforcement officer building inspector would be better. Possibly the assessor. So if it's laid out once and for all on the property card, what the measurements are, where the square footage is, where the boundaries are and where they start. So. There's one question on that. Mistake, mistaking it again. I have no problem when we get to the point where he wants a twenty year lease because it's hard to get a loan on anything. Were they ten year leases or even fifteen? They want a long stretch of term. Is Mr. Shibley on the phone with us, Josh?
I don't have a problem with his daughter taking over.
Oh, no.
And the whole lives. You know that's coming. She's been doing a lot. She's been taking it over slowly.
David, are you there tonight with us?
I am.
Okay, so you heard just a brief discussion of what I had just stated. Uh, is there anything you'd like to add to what you've already submitted to us?
Uh, no, no, Ruben, that was, you hit that.
Also, I, I noticed in the current lease going back over again, when it comes to interior alterations in that lease, Mr. Shibley owns the building. This isn't on the land. I don't see why we would restrict on any renovations inside because town ordinance says anything over seventy dollars, you have to get a permit anyways. Ask the Selectmen's permission to change something on the inside of their restaurant. I don't feel that's necessary. I think that could be something that can be restricted. And also like I said, if his, his daughter's willing to wanting to take it over as they reside, the only thing, I have no problem with that. The only thing Shibley has brought thirty days to far, to our attention, so the lease could be changed at that time. I don't know how you gentlemen feel about that.
I'm glad to see it stay in the family.
Yes. So the, the lease could be redone by the Selectmen and his daughter.
Well, actually, when you look at the lease, it's Shibley's at the pier incorporated.
Yep.
So it doesn't really specify which particular Shibley family member is the ownership. So this would cover any of those.
Shibley think as long as possibly she's one of the officers of the corporation.
Right, right. Yep.
Does that sound something to you, David, that you might have to do? Still there with us?
I heard he's muffled.
So David, I guess at this point, the Selectmen are pretty much, from what I'm hearing from the board, the consensus of possibly working with the town administrator, the town assessor and the, and John Dever's the building inspector to come up with the new lease, the footprints of the building and getting the file card up to date. Does that sound agreeable to you?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we'll, nothing, is there anything else in there you wanna bring before the Selectmen's attention tonight before we close the matter tonight?
And no, just those, uh, what you've addressed, Ruben, is fine.
Okay.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman.
All right, hold on just a minute, Dave. Mr. Holt has a question.
I, I have a question on the file card.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the one we were given tonight in the backup has that ten foot curliche.
Yeah.
Now, one I got from the assessing department, I got it back in, first part of the year, twenty twenty in January, and that does not have it on it. Now, in going through all the lease documentations, uh, everything I've got, I can't find where this ten foot curliche come from.
Well, this is one reason why we're talking about updating the lease and why Mr. Shibley wants to have everything updated. To what the lease says, we have a drawing of it. We have the file, and I want the file card updated so we don't have to go through this issue that we went through this year. Cause it's an embarrassment for the board of Selectmen. It was an embarrassment from the Shibley's and Amy being brought into it and everything else. So.
I never received a copy of the one that doesn't have it on it. Every copy I have has a curliche. I never, I've never got that.
Oh, yeah. I, I.
I have three. They're all like that.
After the spring.
The ten foot curliche. That's.
And after the spring, probably Rob went back and made sure everything was accurate the way it should have been. So you gentlemen are in consensus with the town administrator, building inspector and the town assessor working on the new lease, getting the footprints down and everything else.
Yes.
Then the, then the town attorney will review the new lease. And then we'll bring it up before it. Mr. Shibley will get a copy once we approve it to make sure he agrees with it and we'll move on from there.
And I think it has to go on to, um, the warrant, there's a warrant article.
It possibly could because I never used to when I was selecting before.
We knew that, we never put it out when we renewed it. It's a lot of this with the Shibley's.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Before there was no major.
Right, right.
Uh, Virgil?
Yes?
Um, yeah, the last time we had to go on the town warrant. We had to get a, we had to get a vote, favorable vote from the townspeople for anything more than one year.
Yeah, well, we changed it to the seventeen year.
Right, and that had to be, it couldn't come just from the board. I believe it had to be voted.
They had to do it again.
It did go to town meeting.
So for twenty, it'll have to go again.
Yes. Ten, thirty year lease now or something?
It was ten year, cause I remember when it became a ten year lease. Five years ago. David, anything else tonight?
Uh, no, thank you. This is fine.
All right, then we'll, we'll let the town administrator get ahold of you on the next, uh, meeting on this.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night. All right, gentlemen, moving on. Um, that was point Mr. Shibley. We're moving on to new business assessing department, bid specification, property max and GIS project. In your package, you find that the specs have been rated by Rob. Update all the town maps and everything. It's time that we have Rob on the phone with us. Hi, Rob, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I can hear you now. So we're looking at your proposal you have laid out, go out and bid on all your specs. And have to say it's a little above my pay grade. So I understand, I understand it and understand the reasoning you wanna do it because there's a lot of errors and omission on the tax maps and everything we have now in the assessment card. So highlight a few points for us if you would, please. Do I still have you? Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what was going on with that. You were there and then you weren't.
Did you hear my question that I asked you?
I didn't. I missed it. Can you ask again, please?
So I read through your paperwork on the bid specs and everything else. It's a little bit above my pay grade. Uh, I understand the reasoning for it because there's a lot of errors and omissions when it comes to our tax maps and everything else. So in layman's terms, if you could sit and maybe just bring us up to speed and the board up to speed so if they have any questions or you hit a question, uh, you, maybe you can answer it for us.
Absolutely. Uh, the, 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 we've, we've had, Josh and I have solicited input from Cartographics, from AppGeo and from Paul Zuzgo, who are the only three people in the area that we can find that do the kind of work that we're doing. Cartographics is of the opinion that it's a three hundred thousand jo- dollar job to basically take every property record from surveys and deeds and accurately reconstruct the tax map. Where AppGeo and Paul's opinion are that we can live with the inaccuracies in the map that we have now and gradually improve them with time as we maintain our tax maps and add new, uh, subdivision records, we'll gradually improve any existing errors. Uh, which also comes at the ca- uh, at, at a much lesser cost. Which, uh, my understanding and working with Josh is the town has already established eighty thousand dollars uh, for the mapping project. And I believe after speaking with AppGeo that it will be significantly less than that. Can you hear me, guys?
I can hear you guys. We're just, just. So y- yes, there's, there's a lot of errors and especially when it comes to accurate measurements of properties, acreage.
Correct. It should be understood that a tax map is an approximate document. A tax map is not measured. A tax map has no standing in court. It should be as accurate as you can make it, but it, it, every tax map you'll ever see in every community has a statement at the bottom that says, uh, this tax map is for informational purposes only and is not a legal document, should not be used. It doesn't have to be accurate to the foot. It should be as accurate as possible. A property that's ten acres in size shouldn't look like one acre in scale. And conversely, uh, uh, one acre property shouldn't look like it's ten acres. But I don't think we have errors of that magnitude in most of our maps anyway. What we're really looking for is any potential properties that may not be on the maps at all. And we're looking for where the property, where the, where the maps seem together on edges to make sure that the measurements line up. If you were to take two maps and print them to scale, would they line up together? That's what we're trying to get here. So we don't, we don't really need to spend three hundred thousand dollars to make every parcel in Alton perfect. What we should do instead is strive to get it as clean as we possibly can upfront. And then gradually as we add subdivisions over time with annual mapping updates, the accuracy will improve from one year to the next.
Now, what about your tax cards?
Wh- what about them?
This is my understanding, the way I kinda read this, this would hopefully update your tax cards to the actual description of the property, such as saying someone's property saying on your tax card, there's only four acres when the deed is reading seven acres. That's three acres.
Uh, that, that very seldomly happens. The tax cards, the, the, the map is a representation. When we're saying inaccuracies, we're not essentially what Cartographics is trying to say is we do a giant survey of the town and make everything fit spatially as if the town were surveyed and put on a map. The inaccuracies exist because the, the maps have been essentially hand drawn since nineteen seventy seven. So it's not a problem of the text on the, the, on the map saying the wrong acreage. It's a problem of the scale. In other words, uh, if, if, if the line says four hundred feet, if you measured it to scale, it might only be three hundred and eighty. If that makes sense.
No, it does. That, that I understand.
Yep, that, that's, that's what we're talking about here.
Okay. I guess what that will come for the rebound when I say that your tax cards are inaccurate. And there, you know, I think you'll find out a majority of them are. But anyways, do you have any? Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Rob.
Well, I, I, where, I haven't, in a sense, the tax cards are drawing straight from the deed. Some of them may have inaccuracies. There's, there's property cards that have inaccuracies for all kinds of different reasons, but generally speaking, anytime someone comes in and says your tax card's not accurate, all I say is just show me what you got to back that up and we'll fix it.
Most people won't come in and tell you, I wanna have acreage added for more taxes. But anyway, I understand where you're coming from on this. I'm gonna turn over the other members of the. I'm going to turn over the other members of the, because I got off track there.
Sure, no, that's okay.
Mr. Whitman?
No, uh, he said the actual price should come in less than what's been allotted, so.
I believe, I believe that to be the case. They haven't, that's obviously why we need the RFP, but in the work that I've done, I've been reassured in several instances that, oh, yeah, it, it shouldn't cost you 80 grand to do what we're proposing to do and that. As lo- as long as we're willing to live with existing inaccuracies. Otherwise, you know, the cartographic model of it has to be done by deed, by survey for every lot. Essentially, you start with the town bounds, you lay in the roads, and then you, you have a picture of the town, you fit the lots accordingly. In a perfect world with unlimited funds, that's what I'd recommend, but.
Yep. Yes, then, hold on.
Somebody's being spoiled, I think.
Rob, are you still there? We lost Rob again. He was just abducted. I'll let it take. Call for requests for proposals for property map and GIS project. Motion is made by Ruben Whitman. Property map, GIS project, as submitted to us October 5th, 2020, for the RFPs, second by Virgil McDonald, any further discussion? I call the board, Mr. Larchell.
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteworth? Yes, votes in the affirmative. Thank you, Rob, for joining us tonight. Hope you're all right. Hopefully, see you tomorrow. Number two gentleman, moving on to the fire department, future staffing discussion. Chief Bodine is still with us tonight, he's coming back to join us tonight. Chief, I've read your letter, I like it, don't know if I totally agree with it, but can you break me down in writing the staff scenario of going to six people plus two? Because there's yourself and another gentleman we've already approved for, individual we've already approved for. I shouldn't say gentleman. Um, so that would be a total of eight full-timers you'll have at that point if we go along with this plan. I like the, the grant application that you're talking about. Um, plus it doesn't tie the town's feet down the road.
Right.
But if you could put it down on paper for me to understand it, because I'm, scenario over the weekend, I've been looking at it, putting it in my head, I, I used to do 24-hour shifts versus eight-hour shifts or 12-hour shifts.
Yep, I mean, as far as the, what the actual shifts would be, that's, there are many, many options. And those many options would be based on whether they were six shift workers, eight shift workers, or if you did six people working shifts with per diems combined. My goal is to keep some per diem. You know, I don't want to take the per diem staff we have, I want to give the per diem staff, we have the opportunity to apply for full-time. There's some testing they have to do, a little bit of more certification that has to happen before they can be full-time, this allows for that. Um, the other portion of that is it allows for if we have six people working shifts, it can leave an open day that can still be covered by per diem staff. And there's a savings to the town that way instead of having eight people working shifts. Uh, myself, I'm not going to be working 24-hour shifts, I'm going to be working days. And the other proposed position for 2021 is going to be more of a shift supervisor for the days to, uh, to keep things on track. Go to the fire fire activations and go to the motor vehicle accidents and kind of keep things moving, but also be that third set of hands to get the engine or rescue up to those motor vehicle accidents. And second, you know, if we have a fire, we can actually bring the tanker, so we have an extra person.
When we, when we discuss this, when we put on the full-time, you put on, what is it, four? Full-time or six, full-time, whatever, the ambulance and stuff.
You have, myself and the secretary of the only full-time staff.
Gone, so the ambulance was staffed?
With per diem, yes.
Well, with per diem, because we set it up that they would be able to be staffed to 24/7.
Yes. There is 24/7 staffing with per diem staff.
And I thought we set it up that we had the chief, he was the chief, or I think it was given. And assistant chief. So they would have an option in that building.
So the, the deputy does all the inspections. So that is actually pretty much all he has time for at this point. The amount of inspections he does plus the fire protection. So as far as going on calls and doing that, I go on more calls than he does just for that reason. I have a lot of office stuff to do, but I would have never thought, to be honest with you. My, I'm a firefighter first, and I've always wanted to go on every call I can, and there are many times I've been there only against eight. Um, and that's the idea, that, that daytime officer to guide the shift, to keep projects moving forward, help with some maintenance of vehicles and that stuff. And then the shift people are the ones that are going to be basically going on calls and handling the rooftop groundwork. This is just the next, this is the next step in progression. Now, last time I was here.
Full-time fire department.
I brought up the, um, the next person, the daytime officer. You have, you guys had asked me to show you a plan to work on moving forward to full-time. And this is really, these are the two plans, and the, you know, the big difference is if we did two people, starting in, and the plan is just started in 2022, so this is not a giant step right now, this is a planning process. And, you know, I don't expect you necessarily to commit to anything today. I'm all looking for consensus to keep working in this direction. Um, but if we did two people in 2022, two people in 2023, and then two people in 2024, that's a stepwise fashion that slowly increases. It would be myself.
You've got four now. To stay on the ambulance.
No, as per, no, no, as per diem, but not only part-time.
The per diem staff is going to be replaced with full-time staff. Um, and the per diem staff is still going to be there to supplement as far as vacations, any, you know, hopefully overtime.
Sick time.
Yeah, sick time, and then if we do the six, that leaves an open day with, you know, two 24-hour shifts for per diem staff to still be, you know, hands-on in the department. So that way, we're not pushing the per diem people out altogether.
I feel two per year.
Well, that, that's, that's not a problem.
Yeah, well, we're.
The vote would still go in front of the people.
Yeah, but that would be in 2022.
Two is, we go, one, one, it would go before budget committees and a public hearing, then it would go before deliberative session and public hearing, it would be discussed there.
Yeah.
Then it would go at town meeting vote. But this is the discussion that when it came out to full-time saying where are we heading, and we are heading towards a full-time fire service department.
Well, we're going to have to have it.
There's an opportunity to put in for a grant, save a grant, and that's four staffing fire departments to help fire departments get that full-time staffing that are, you know, falling away from. Um, with that, we wouldn't have to pay a dummy for up to six people for the first three years.
Well, so then it would hit all once after that.
So that's, that's the thing, in, in six years, we're still going to be at the same spot. It's just a matter of getting there in a stepwise fashion or paying nothing and then getting there.
That was started with the SRO, too.
That.
But there's, but there's no reason, once you stop that, if you go through the grant, if the town couldn't stop slowly, still fund that, those positions, and then by the time you get there at that end of those, the grant period, the money's already there and in.
Exactly, it would have to be that way.
The other, the other thing to remember is the money is already in the budget for the staffing table. Um, it would have to be boosted a little bit for full-time. Um, the big hit is going to be the benefits, which is probably going to be somewhere around $450,000, somewhere around there. Where the benefits are at that time.
150, yeah.
That would be at that end mark.
So if we went to this, there should be no overtime then as long as you have some per diem?
I can't, I can't promise that.
You would fight hard not to have it.
That's, the idea is to have the per diem there, so the overtime would happen due to, you know, phone calls or building fires.
Or you're still out.
Emergency call-offs are still going to happen.
But it should be able to, it should be able to be controlled.
Yeah, as far as vacation time, sick, uh, sick time, that's not always forecasted. But vacation times are forecasted, we'll be able to fill those easily. Sick time, we, we're going to do our best, and we have a pretty good pool. Um, hopefully, that pool becomes the full-time staff, that's really the plan.
So the other thing is, right now, your membership is down low, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Uh, it's not down low, but it's, it's lower, we've.
Over what you've had in the past.
Yeah, we've had some people move on to other full-time departments.
Well, I'm, I'm interested in seeing this come out a little bit further than what I'm seeing, and also if you could break it down on paper for me, the shift coverages. Just to help me understand it.
Have they been with us a few years before leaving, or are they going through? And then within one or two years, they're gone?
Uh, most of the people that, that have gone since, since I've been here, I don't know about before I was here, have been here two to three years after finishing. They, they put their time in. We, um, just.
So we're, we're still making money by sending to the academy and then.
Right.
And then, uh, they leave.
No, that, that's not, we're not taking people, training them.
Right, that's what I want to make sure. Oh, well, we went through that.
Yes. The thing that happens in the fire service, we, we test for people, we bring them in, we do everything we can to keep them, and then when they're done, we basically train them to be a full-time firefighter.
They go on to full-time somewhere else.
Is there a time limit, um, to when you can apply for the, for the grant?
For the grant, yes, um, it hasn't opened yet, it should open anytime, we just don't know when it's going to open. It'll be before the end of the year, it'll have to finish.
So would you be looking for now to have, uh, the okay to apply for the grant? Is that what you're looking for tonight?
If, if that's the direction you want to go, yes. Two things, if we apply for the grant, we don't have to accept it if we get it. Um, and if we apply for the grant and we get it, we don't have to serve, keep the people on afterwards. I mean, personally, that's a terrible thing to do.
Yeah, no, no. But that's the consensus I got tonight, you were looking for the okay to, to go forward with applying for the grant.
If you're interested in the grant, I would like to have the okay to work on it.
Plus, by the way, we're grown by 2024. You're going to be full-time by the way this sounds. The more calls you're getting, the more, you know what I mean?
And that's what, that's what, well, it's finding this plan to get us there, and what's the best way to get there? Do we do it in a small stepwise fashion? Do we do it, try to use the grant, save, I mean, there's big savings by using the grant, but then there's the big step out at the end. You're in the same boat at the end either way, it's just a matter of how you get there.
Right. Thanks.
You can. We're looking down the road for a full-time fire department. That's the goal, you know, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have the infrastructure to support it, do we?
Yes, we've been fighting this.
Buildings?
The buildings? I mean.
If you have a full-time fire department, normally.
Yeah, we have the building to.
Sleeping quarters.
Right now, that's, that's what's happening with the per diem staff. Um, is it adequate? Sure, is it ideal? No. I mean, it, it does need, it's had two upgrades in the past.
Yeah.
I would be lying if I didn't say it needs to be replaced. Now, with that, we see the town put some money together to, you know, have a master plan consultant to that. As soon as you get that working, and that's, that's what we're going to be looking to see what we need for infrastructure as far as, you know.
Also, West Alton.
Yeah.
East Alton. Um, departments that where West Alton is mostly volunteer at this time.
Yeah, yeah, east and west, uh, there, there are some stations, there's people living out there, they take those trucks out and they're following with us. It's all one department, but we all, you know, out there, they can get there quicker. But, yeah, in, infrastructure is a big part of it, okay? The master plan is really a big part of that.
Yeah, and that's the way I'm. And the way I look at it is the fire and the highway department are the two biggest infrastructures that we need to be replaced at this point. Yes, police department, they just went through a couple of few years of remodeling and upgrading there, but as far as the fire department, it's just been a, it's been an addition after an addition after an addition, and finally, it's running out of room. And then the highway department, same thing.
Plus, they're right down in the roots.
And then, and, right, they're in a flood plain, one sitting in the old dump. Um, so it's, it's something the town needs to look at, but it's like the chief said, wait for master plan to come out and see what ideal thing is. I don't believe in, I, I'm not in favor of a safety, I have to tell you that, lease and fire together. Favor that at all. But, um, anyways, anything else for the chief? On, so you want to continue working on this and going towards that approach in the next two years?
Yeah, I think he, I actually think he should go ahead and, and at least apply for, uh, the grant now, in my opinion, and he can inform us as how that's going and give us more information.
Need to apply for the grant, when, what's the timeframe where you want to start this in 2022?
Um, well, so you're applying, if we're going to apply now, so we can tackle branded stuff in 2022. Um, I don't know when the, when the grant process is going to open up for sure. But it's kind of, you know, like the same thing with the lab, and if you apply now.
Get your hopes up and then make it.
All right, what's the consensus of the board? Paul, you want him to go ahead for the grant?
Let's see, go ahead and at least apply for the grant, see where it goes from there and give us more information.
Mr. Whitman?
Yeah, I think I would agree with that because we don't have to accept the grant.
Oh, Mr. Holt? Yes, but yes, you got the consensus of the board, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on, thank you, sir, have a good night. Moving on to number three, administration investment policy. I'll turn this over to Chris and Laura.
Want to speak on it first?
Do they?
How the policy?
So, yeah, each year you should be signing this, um, investment policy as a board because your members do change. This is just to, um, keep a policy for your treasurer to invest for the town as you see fit. Required by RSA, that you have that. And that the one that I found had, um, was like 2009, was last signed when I could find. It should be done annually.
Annually?
Should be annually because the board changes. So like if some new member comes in, it should be done at the beginning of every year or the end of every year.
But that's what the trustees, the trust funds work for.
Not all your money, though, that's just your trust money.
Here, I've seen this.
In all the years of my selectmen, after the end of this term, 17 years, I have never seen this policy.
And it's supposed to be done.
He signed it in 09, um, Peter Bolter.
Bolter. Must have been.
Never seen this.
It is part of the town treasurer's RSA of her duties.
What's the RSA number on that?
Um, 41, Poland 29, town treasurer. Yeah, she's supposed to invest any money of excess of funds that are not immediately needed for the purpose of expending per the investment policy adopted by the selection under RSA 41.
She's having these funds.
It's whatever she does, she feels it's not needed, she can just put it into like an investment savings account kind of thing to.
Feels like it ain't needed.
Like if, if you have a huge payment coming up, she's not going to take that money in.
No, where is she getting the money to invest? Out of the surplus?
No, the general fund, tax revenues that are.
Right, out of general fund that we use at the end of the year for surplus to give back to taxpayers.
Yeah.
How much money does this treasurer have in the, in these accounts?
Well, the way that the treasurer currently works, you have a payroll account, you have a general fund, and then she has another account.
Right.
She moves money back and forth as needed.
Get a list on what's in our investments?
You should have that based on your revenues every month anyway, the general fund you'd have there, the water fund you'd have, the conservation fund, recreation, bombing fund is in your month.
Right, but she's saying, like even in here, it says that they can have, um.
She has a separate account that she's trying to get more interest every month. She just leaves the majority of our money there and moves it as we pay the bills.
As needed.
So it's like a sweep. She leaves it, it gains more interest, and she'll take it when she needs it, and, and then if we get a huge tax payment, she'll move it back.
This is normal.
Yeah. It's just that you really should update it every year, so you all know what is in it and you sign off on it for the audit purpose.
If you want to know what's in the sweep account, we need that stumped treasure. The town treasurer isn't elected official, so we can request that information if you'd like.
Like a monthly report or something?
Yeah, I'm really surprised that you don't have.
I'd be on it.
That'd be monthly, I mean.
Well, a monthly report would still be nice, would be nice.
For all your accounts and what you have in it.
Yeah, so, because the treasury gets that report every month, so, I mean, it wouldn't be nothing to have a copy and email it to Laura, and then Laura can present it.
Well, it's at the end of. Well, it's at the end of the year, she's got a surplus to stay in that, that account, or does it come back to the taxpayers?
She wouldn't have a surplus. It's still your general fund.
Oh, okay.
Anything else, gentlemen? If not, I'll entertain the motion to approve the investment policy. And this would be for twenty twenty, and then we'll have to redo it again in twenty twenty-one.
Oh, this wouldn't be for, for twenty twenty-one? This would be?
We could do it for twenty twenty-one, since you don't have any, I mean.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have new board member, you're gonna have another board member elected in twenty twenty-one.
Find another one in December.
So twenty twenty-one.
I'll entertain a motion, if you gentlemen will, to approve the investment policy for the year twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Paul Rochelle to approve, to approve the investment policy and submitted for twenty twenty-one, second by Mr. McDonald. Any further discussion? Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Just the whole.
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Yes, votes in the affirmative. Thank you, Laura. And I guess we will look to you in the future to bring this up every year. Old business, number one, smart growth municipal survey discussion.
Well, my opinion, put right on this, stay out of our lives.
I agree.
Send it back.
I agree.
Was this done before? Or is this new?
I have never seen this before.
I was gonna ask, is it necessary?
You don't have to answer it if you don't want to.
See the advantage.
I see it as another form of central planning, just like Lakes Region Planning Commission does, just like, uh, Extension Services of UNH do.
They started this because you fought against Lakes Region planning. That's where the smart growth.
I guess I don't need to say anything here then, huh?
I know.
That's pretty simple. So the consensus of the board is what?
Forget it, drop it. Drop it.
West Side Bay retaining wall and brick sidewalk discussion. This is a can we kick down the road, road, road. So I was talking to Mr. Roberts, just to let you gentlemen know, and he might be on, available still for this conversation. Did you pay to work on that? No, this is just brought up, how he is there, but this is being brought up for discussion because we've talked. Did you notice the east side, a lot of folks weren't happy with what we did down there? But unfortunately, they had every opportunity before we did it to come and take some public hearing down, and before we did it. The west side wall is in need of repair. It's not, probably falling apart, but it will eventually. I do holes in it though. Yeah. I do, and I hope he doesn't mind me saying this. It's on the phone. We talked about Max and Ray, and we didn't go in there and I said I was leaning to one down. And we're thinking that this, church street, school street being done. I was thinking that's quite a job for his crew to do. So it'd be no problem if we did that job next year, that the highway crew couldn't go down and work on that sidewalk down there, get that done and possibly the other two. But like I said before, I was in favor of adding a position to the highway department, whether it's a laborer, truck driver. Whereas towards laborer, whether it's Mr. Roberts explained to me, we sat down, chat about it. Truck driver would make more sense because if a truck driver is out, then he has a truck driver to put in that truck and go. He has the equipment operator that's out, they put them in the equipment if they're qualified. If not, somebody else could, they could get a truck driver where laborer couldn't. So in talking with him with that, in talking about church street, school street, that's gonna be quite a task at hand. By the time the engineering's done, all the piping is redone, the drainage work, the sidewalks, but then the water mains, but then it's gonna tie up that whole road for quite a long time. He's failing that, you know, that's probably something I'll have to go out to a private company to do versus our guy. Mr. Roberts, if you don't mind, I'll ask you to join in. Is that the conversation that me and you about had? Hey, Ken?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just to give an overall picture, uh, there's a lot of complications on school street. Uh, we'll find those in the public hearings and after we meet with, uh, possibly going through an engineer. Uh, part of it's because a major trunk of the electric lines actually run up. Uh, going towards Main Street would be the right-hand side. In order to move any of those lines, it'd be quite an enormous task. Um, so questions with public hearings of moving the sidewalk to the other side of the road. Uh, the underground drainage, some asbestos in, uh, you got a sixty-day period in order to do the work. Um, so there's a lot of question marks throughout the whole thing. Um, width of the roads on church street, uh, width of the sidewalks, if we're gonna continue the concrete sidewalk, the curvings, just like we would do on school street. Um, the survey shows some complications with buildings that are already existing. Um, and I'm having those copies, uh, and we should be able to pick them up tomorrow, and I'll have them dropped off at the town hall so you can view them. Um, some of the buildings are within the right-of-way, some of the buildings are within twelve inches of the right-of-way.
Yep.
So in order to build sidewalks, underground drainage, the water that we should put all the way up through there, there is an eight-inch line, and I think Courtney has driven that out quite well. Uh, eight-inch line coming up from one forty to the middle of Pine Street, School Street, Church Street, to tie into that, bring it up the Main Street, and be able to tie the school in with more water. There, there's a lot of issues that are there, and not that the highway department crew cannot do them, but they're only a forty-hour a week crew and they're limited on equipment. So my idea is, uh, for you to have this engineered and then gone out to bid for a construction outfit to come in. I think there's gonna be close to five hundred thousand dollars left in road reconstruction this year, and if you appropriate the nine fifty, you have a good possibility of completing most of this project. And then the highway crew can go down and work in places like the bay. There's a lot of tree cutting still be done. There's a lot of ditching that has not been completed, so there's a lot of that that can be done. Uh, culvert replacements and other things that the highway crew can do to catch up for the following year and prepared to go on with road reconstruction the following year. This is just such a complicated build, being in the middle of town and you're trying to run school from closure to start is not a big time span.
Now, Kenny?
Yes, sir.
You're thinking, you're gonna get that water main in, sidewalks in, drainage for one point four million on those roads?
I don't know. That's why it has to go to engineer, and engineer will come up with an estimated price. The only good thing is the substructure throughout Main Street and, or Main Street, throughout church street and school street, there's a lot of sand, so it's not a lot of material being, coming in. You know, a lot of that can be utilized.
I know, but I think you're still looking at almost four, four and a half million dollars by the time you use water. And there and, and.
Well, the water main would have to be born by the water users, not by the taxpayer. Like, like in years past when the highway, uh, road reconstruction fund got used on certain aspects of the water that's.
We're not gonna do the water mains and just ride the pavement, pound it and repave it. But that's all part of the project, was the water mains and everything. That's all part of this project.
But hopefully it'd be broke down by the engineering, what the water main would cost, estimated water main would cost, estimated drainage, lines being moved, the, what the, there's, there's a lot more to this project, Mr. Roberts. Certain, certain buildings are within the right-of-way, there's some that are only twelve inches of the right-of-way.
But that's something that we can't.
But he doesn't know until we actually get it out to engineering. He's just estimating right now.
Those buildings in the right-of-ways and stuff, there's nothing we can do. We're gonna have to keep the same footprints we got.
Oh, engineering will address that. But we need to address the boundary lines and the right-of-way down through that, which we're doing. So I'm, I'm just stating the conversation we, because Rob said, I'm glad he's on the line tonight to bring this up and talk to you folks about it because it's something we have to look at.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just to mention, you know, one of the question marks I've always had, we did the school project, the parking back and forth across the street, we knew that school street was sixty-six feet wide. From Route one forty up to Pine Street and Church Street, we never knew until the survey was done, it is also sixty-six feet wide. So if you ever driven down there, it's a very narrow corridor, and to think that that is sixty-six feet wide, and one of the biggest complaints was there's no sidewalk going to Route one forty. So there's a lot of complications here.
Oh, yeah, there is. Might be worth taking that little extension there and making it a one-way. You know, just changing it into a one-way down there where we don't have the width in there, because those houses are pretty tight down there.
And if I may, you know, the.
People.
Hold on, guys, guys, hold on. Go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
If I may, that, that would be between you and the engineers to sit and talk about and say, this is what we wanna see. You know, and then, you know, he can tell you what can be done and what can't be done, and then he can put that project together. I mean, asbestos alone, you know, they'll have a control group. I mean, basically, you just wet it down, put it in plastic bags, and then there's the disposal. But we know that there's some asbestos lines in the ground. We know that the drainage system on church street is really messed up because they widened it at one time and put parking in. Uh, it's an extra wide road. It's kinda unusual the way it was built, but all of that can be changed by an engineer in these specs for you. And I think that's the way we really need to address this thing to get it all on paper and then get it out to bid before the school closes down next year.
Makes sense.
I agree.
Now, Kenny, are we using one of the town engineers?
Not necessarily. We'd have to go out to bid, Virgil. I think that's a bid project only.
Yep. I'd love to bid.
Go on.
Yeah, I agree.
At least we know what we're looking at.
Hope. Yeah, and I think Kenny, back, uh, the, the beginning of the summer, mentioned that, that possibly getting this road engineered.
Yes, he did. He did. Yeah, he did.
Well, Kenny, I appreciate you coming in and stepping in here tonight with us on this. Uh, it looks like this is the way the selectmen move forward, then we could possibly use the highway crew down on the sidewalk next year and possibly retaining walls. Um, and not doing, getting brush cut back, tree removal, and ditch lines and culvert systems. Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Um, hit, uh, this is a question for Ken. Uh, Ken, has anyone looked at, at that wall in the bay on the west side now that the water is so low?
I have.
Walked that, I've walked it and I've looked at it, and what the, the bottom of that wall looks like. And, uh, and look at some of the rocks that are coming out and the way it looks and everything like that. Um, is there any, i- is there any consensus on, on that wall could be saved?
I think so. I think what we're looking at is, uh, you're gonna use a lot of concrete, especially a low water that we've got now, but prior to that, the biggest thing is take all the existing rocks that fell out, clean them, basically with a scrub brush. Let them dry, have them prepared, ready to go back in. And, you know, and then rebuild the wall from underneath and re-support it. And anything that you can get behind that has voids, I'd pour it full of concrete.
No, I agree. I, I, I think the thing of it is, I've never seen the water this low. Is something that we could possibly start working on? And taking care of some of these, uh, areas that are really exposed right now?
We don't have the manpower for that.
Okay.
I mean, if, if I.
Just a thought.
If, if the chairman allows me, I can give him a quick rundown of what's going on.
Sure, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, quick rundown is like right now, we're in the final phases of putting the catch basins into Robert's Cove, which is the one point four mile mark. Uh, then we have to go back through and dress everything up. I'm actually meeting with GMI at six thirty in the morning. We're gonna do the layout. Hopefully, we can grind the road within the next three weeks. We can grind it, pave it, and hopefully close that road up for the season. But we also have the permit on Hall's Hill Road to open the pond back up where we have a leaky drainage, which is at Mr. Quinley's property. Uh, we have a, the bottom of it's actually leaking off the T. We have a remedy for that, but we have to dig it out. We do have the wetlands permit for that. And then I was just called today that we do have the wetlands permit for Depot Street to be able to do that. And I understand that, uh, there was things going on with DES. They were trying to bump the project in the bay up to a tier one, and that's been denied, and now it's gonna be a regular fixed project, so we should see that permit within the next week or so. So we're kind of, we're kind of booked out of what, what you, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Well, water is way down, but we just don't have the manpower to be able to do all of these projects.
No, I understand. It was just a thought. The water was so low, I was walking right down, and you could see the whole bottom of that wall exposed perfectly.
Oh, yeah, sitting on that footing and yes, and all that would have to be scrubbed out. I was actually looking at putting the pressure washer over the wall to be able to clean the area out down there, and to be able to scrub the, scrub the rocks and dry them, and then be able to put them back in with water. But that would be up to your next supervisor here. Now that's gonna be attained.
Right. All right, it was just a thought. Thank you. And I did take a ride down on Robert's Cove Road last week, and, uh, you and your team are doing an excellent job down there. I thought it looked great.
Thank you. I'll mention that to them.
Anything else, Mr. Roberts? Okay, any motion for him to go out of the engineering on that? All right, gentlemen, I would entertain a motion. Well, surely not.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, can we wait till we have the survey in your hands so you can look at it?
Yes, sir. I have no problem with that.
You may have some ideas in the survey prior to going to bid, such as the one-way that you may wanna entertain prior to sending that out to bid, and we can put those in the specs.
Okay, sir. Thank you, appreciate. Anything else, gentlemen, from Mr. Roberts, before I let him go? Well, Mr. Roberts, have a lovely evening. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You should go there. We're going on the Robert's Cove next. Robert's Cove Beach discuss, discussion. Back visiting Robert's Cove again. The chief has got his letter in there as he did before. He'll take it and watch it better. The snowmobile club wasn't Mount Major, it was actually, um, Powder Mill. Um, so, I mean, it wasn't the club here, the local club here in town, it was Powder Mill, and that really needs to go to them, be addressed to them. So basically, what needs to be said then, if they're not gonna fill out or to do the, um, request of the landowner providing them with insurance, then the town of Alton will be closing that part of the trail down to Powder Mill. Yes, ma'am.
So in the research that was conducted, it was discovered, um, that on snowmobile trails, they don't actually issue, um, a certificate for, for each property owner that they cross on the property. You'll see a copy of a certificate in your binder, and that's issued through the state of New Hampshire, and it covers all property owners. It's a blanket, um, liability certificate. So that particular property down there on Robert's Cove is covered by insurance for that snowmobile club.
And we sent this over to the landowners?
Um, I believe they are aware of it. I don't, they had not received their copy yet, but it was anticipated that they would be shortly from the state. And then you'll also notice in this thick amount of paperwork that, um, the police department has been involved quite a bit with all of the summertime problems with people down there during the day and at night. And, um, the pictures that are in here of the signage down there were taken by the police department. Um, and, you know, violations of the easement. Um, you know, like no smoking or, you know, the, the things like that would. The police department can go down there, and there are certain violations that they can trespass a person from going onto that property again.
Well, that was the problem is that they've been doing fireworks outside, bomb fires at night.
Awful.
Which I can understand the.
Yep, absolutely.
Playing late at night.
How different than when you used to go up on the dam when you were a kid.
Yeah. Yeah.
On the mountain.
So the, the property owner knows. The property owner knows that they really do have to call the police department when these things are going on, because the police department cannot be there twenty-four hours a day sitting at the property.
Maybe we need to make a sign. You don't wanna lose this area. Keep it picked up. Don't do any parties and respect the neighbors that are allowing you to use it.
So it's, it's, so just so that you know, most people that use it abide by the rules.
It's always, it's only a few that ruin it.
Right, right.
It takes a few.
Yep.
It takes a few.
Yep.
But there was an issue of parking, I believe, wasn't there?
Up and down the road, which is on.
But there's, on page four.
There's plenty of parking.
Yeah, there's, no, it's. Yeah, there's, no, it says there shall be no parking allowed along Robert's Cove Road.
We put the parking across the street because they were parking so they couldn't, Urban couldn't get his boats in, so he gave us a half acre.
Yeah, but the complaint is they're parking on Robert's Cove Road.
Right.
If I'm not mistaken, they're on the road, yeah.
This is one of them years that everything is backed up.
The towns, the town would have to put no parking signs up along the road.
Right, because thi- this easement is only for that particular property. So if somebody, you know, this easement has nothing to do with the parking.
It's got nothing to do with it.
But, you know-
And this is kind of a funny year for us.
Yeah, it is.
No, it's going to be that way though for even, for more years.
For a few more years, but it's only going to get worse after people- Well, I think, once they, right, once they've learned everything that's here, oh yeah, they're beginning to like it.
They might think they're finding everything.
I think it's still with our community, our signs coming into town, it says welcome Alton.
Now give the hello.
No, 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 no. Welcome, welcome our community, enjoy our outdoor resources, but please respect our neighbors, and respect the property and the surroundings. What you bring in, please bring out.
Yeah.
Because the litter I have seen this year on the side roads, and, and I'm going to point right at the hikers. Oh yeah? Uh, Mount Major Park itself, Reed Road, Alton, uh, Alton Mountain Road, and Jesus Valley, the trash. And these are supposed to be naturalists that are tree huggers, most of them.
But, but the, the people that are doing this are not true hikers. The true hikers-
No better.
That's right. They carry in, carry out.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, let me, let me finish. It's like a painter. Anybody can paint. You have good painters and you have bad painters. It's like a hiker. You got hikers that are the real naturals, but you've got people that say they're hikers and they're not, and they'll throw the trash in.
Imagine what the top-
All I'm, all I'm saying is, I, I think at some points in some of these roads, that they're enjoying our natural resources. They should be aware of what they're doing by leaving their trash around.
Do you think they would really care?
Don't come back. But that's, that's, that's my view.
But I know, I just teach your man. I know what this is saying, is that there's a lot of people that are from town and in town that are true hikers. They like going on the trails and it, you know, especially this time of year.
They obey the rules.
They obey the rules, and they, they-
They, they know what they're doing. It's the, unfortunately, the people that are not from around here that go up there with everything in their pockets and everything, their backpack, and they just keep tossing it.
Well, I like Reuben's idea of putting it right on the sign. Say, if you don't want to lose this place, stop picking up your crap. You know what I mean? It should be on the signs to let people know, hey, you're going to lose it.
I think we're going to be in for this sort of thing for quite some time. I drove the Kangamangas yesterday. The whole length of the road-
Packed.
Was like, uh, our, our situation here on Route 11.
Yes, packed.
Just constantly, you couldn't, people walking in the road and everything.
Oh yeah.
And almost, I'm sorry, but almost every license tag, like out of state. Most of them Massachusetts, but I saw New York, New Jersey, Connecticut.
That's right. But even the city of Concord is going nuts with their hiking trails down there because of the parking and the trash.
Well, e- everybody is, all over the entire state, yeah.
But you can't coop people up in their houses. Okay, so going back to Robert's Cove, I know I led you guys astray here.
I would like to see the police at least do regular, um, patrols.
So they, they, they have increased their patrols on Robert's Cove because of this stuff?
Good.
On all shifts?
When was the, if I may ask, uh, when was the last time that there was, there was an issue? How long ago?
Well, we-
Well, it looks like according to this last month, but I-
Well, that's what I'm saying. Recently have, they've already heightened their, their patrols. Has it, has it made a difference is what I'm asking. It was a past month.
I would assume so. If you, if you look through those emails, James, you'll see some from Ryan from the-
Kind of hot, yeah. But we've had this in conservation. That's why I wanted to shift up here, because we're the ones that signed this.
So just so you all know, the, the property owner complained to the Conservation Commission, and Virgil is on the Conservation Commission, and that's why this was brought along with you.
And we've been dealing with this for three, four months since springtime.
So has it, has it gotten any better in the last month?
Not yet, because he's still asking us for stuff and still trying. That's why I said before, at the last meeting we had, let's bring him in.
Okay.
Let's bring Conservation in. And let's have a meeting, get everybody on the same page.
Okay, but I got the impression from him, what he was asking for now is because of the insurance. From the, from the snowmobile, well, not the, not the trash issue.
No, I think it's both.
It's both, okay.
But it's late at night, they're having bonfires, they're screaming down.
They're stealing it?
Yes. They're screaming down there. That's why I asked, but like Ryan said, you can't really catch them in the act.
Why not?
I don't know. Somebody's going to make a phone call when it's happening and get them down there.
And they're late at night, they're smoking there, they're smoking dope there.
Set a camera.
These people are a little upset because they're the neighbors.
I don't blame them.
And neither do I.
No, no, that's not, you shouldn't have to get why.
But I wanted to shift up here because at least we have the authority to do something. That, because I'd hate to lose this.
Oh, definitely. He needs, he needs to be treated properly. And he's be-
That's why, at the last time when we brought this up, I said, let's get Christopher, uh-
Hepburn.
Hepburn in here, some conservation people in here, and let's figure it out, get chief, the chief in here, and let's get it figured out so everybody's on the same page, everybody knows what's going on. And he'll be happy, the town will be happy, and we'll be able to work it out.
Well, un- unfortunately. We can get it worked out, but as far as them going up there at nighttime, at midnight, at 1 o'clock in the morning, starting a fire, it's going to happen. It's going to be up to the neighbors to call the police.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Because as you know as well as I do, we had the dam on the mountain where our kids grew up, we had the Wolfborough pits, and we also had the White Point pit.
Absolutely.
Many times if the police come out and chase us, try to chase us out of it, we went down and hid in the pitch. They were constantly up there. And then there was a lot of times they just didn't come up because they knew they weren't going to get us out of there.
Well, I had to cut the handcuffs off.
And I'll, and I'll be first one into it. That's one of the skeletons out of my closet.
So all, all this is, um-
The best thing, the best thing we do is monitor, police it. I still think, until you get the sign from the Conservation Department out there where this is one, they're placed on. I have no problem bringing him here with concerns, but I, but I, but I've heard all his concerns in his letter. So I'm trying to address those.
Trying to help.
So all I'm saying is that down the future, put a sign up. This property was granted to the Town of Alton by an easement. We need to keep it picked up. We need to keep it clean. We could lose this easement if the neighbors keep getting upset and being, you know, having parties and stuff like that. No parties allowed. Oh, we could lose this. People need to know, we will lose this.
Yeah, because when this first started, a lot of it was the trash because they weren't picking enough up. So trash was, you know, there wasn't a lot. It was, it was some around the bar in the trash can. But parks and reces that up there, they go up almost every day to pick it up now. You know what I mean, and that? But it just keeps, and I think it's a lot that the-
Some of it can't, oh, I think we're having, uh, a heightened problem with trash in the whole town. And like Liz said, and every town is experiencing it. We have to just have, uh, a little bit more cooperation with the police department to make more patrol if they can. And people, if they see something, report it.
Anything else, gentlemen?
We're not going to make anything. We sent him a letter.
Then to review this, the-
I'll call him.
Call him or whatever, yeah.
Because the public access sign here lists about all of these things they're complaining about.
You know, it's just there already.
It is, it is there.
All right. Nothing else then on that, gentlemen? Well, let's move on to the selectmen's reports. Mr. Holt? Uh, I'm on set.
Michelle? Uh, yes, um, on September 30th, we had the ZAC meeting, and we're moving forward. We've had our third meeting. And moving, uh, a little bit further forward on, um, past warrant articles of last year that did not pass. I mentioned this before, and some of the ones that we're, um, researching and re- rewriting to put back in again for, uh, new amendments were, uh, child daycare uses, lumber yards, outdoor recreation, eventually Airbnbs, and tiny homes. So these are the discussions we've had, and then we've already, uh, changed some of the verbiage on some of the first ones I just mentioned. And working with those as we move along. So moving along quite nicely and, um, coming up with some good ideas to re, um, put these into the, uh, warrant articles. And going over anything else that we've missed in the past warrant articles, and going through the zoning, um, book, and see if there's anything else that may be a trouble, a little bit of problem that maybe needs new wordage or to be removed.
Not going into the storage contenders?
We're going to, we're going to bypass that for now.
Okay, because it went down two years in a row, so.
Yeah, so we decided to give it a little break and, uh, come up with some better ideas.
Bring that up again next.
Okay?
Go. Let's move on.
Planting board work is ready to start next play. Um, Jessica's supposed to be getting the test with, uh, could, um, not counselor, but, uh, consultant. So let's get ready to start on the, um, CIP. It was supposed to, should have been $1.58 this year. We've got it down at 99 cents, leveled the next three years and then drops. So with, with that, that'll be coming.
I think it will.
We're going to go planting board first, then it'll be coming here. Okay, everybody, that's giving everybody what they need. Jessica and, um, Amelia did a great job on setting that up for us. I mean, they made it a lot easier for us to work that program to get it so the tax rate stays down to the $1.58 this year.
They're a good team, and they've been doing very well.
About it.
Well, the one I had, came up earlier, that was Jesus Valley Road, talking to the neighbors up there and then posting the land, which was always open. Now they posted, closed it, so I'm not going to bring that up again. The budget committee did not meet last week, the week before. It was going off the computer like a core. So I had no reports on you on the budget committee. The way it keeps going, it might not even be one this year, so.
Still can't get more?
But by law, we have to have them. So at this point, I'm going to end at this point and turn it over to the chairman.
When we post meetings, can we post them outside this town hall, please? A lot of people go up and a lot of people have mentioned it to me. And we're starting to not post them there, and they're on the computer. And a lot of people walk up and look at the one right outside the door, including me.
So it's my understanding that all agendas are posted at the post office, the town hall, and on the website, the town's website.
Okay, that's why we canceled Conservation the other night, because it wasn't posted.
Yes, and, and I had a discussion, the town planner came to see me about that, and apparently it had been posted, and someone removed it. And in a situation like that, the meeting could have been held because it was legally posted.
We didn't know that.
It's not, not the town, well, I, I can't answer that, but she-
We go outside to see if it's posted, because we know it's at the post office, and then we check that board.
Well, we have some pretty responsible people who post, so if this ever happens again, you can be guaranteed that it did, it had been posted.
I'm just asking if we can have it posted out there.
So-
Because we have a conservation coming up that ain't posted yet.
When you say out there-
In the box.
In the box.
In the foyer?
No, outside.
Outside, because you can't get in the foyer.
You mean outside the building?
Outside in that little-
Outside the bulletin, outside.
A little bulletin, outside bulletin.
Yeah.
I will ask them to do that.
If we can, please. Thank you.
Anything else, sir? And I will pass the torch along to Mr. Deum-
So I have one item. Um, I need- Yep, just, just one for open session. Um, I need a vote to approve trick-or-treating on October 31st from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
So gentlemen, you heard the young lady. She needs a motion to approve trick-or-treating on October 31st from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So move it. Second, motion to approve trick-or-treating on October 31st from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Virgil, um, Paul or Michelle, seconded by Virgil McDonald. Any discussion?
Uh, we're going to have the town administrator handing out candy here.
We are not handing out candy during a state of emergency.
Just checking.
So this, this came from the police.
You're keeping all the candy.
This just came in from the police chief. He got to ask it while he was on the phone. So if anyone further discussion, I'll pull the board. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
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 This one worth, yes. Votes in a favor, thank you, police chief, Mr. Heath. That made my night. Trick-or-treat matters.
Yeah, it does.
Yep. Don't, don't ask some of my employees at the store, because I got one guy who said it's stupid. That's all right, don't worry.
I know.
He didn't like the bats flying around. He didn't like the eyeballs hanging out at the store. He didn't like the guy crawling out from underneath the counter today.
Then you got to do it all the more to him.
So gentlemen, we'll move on to the minutes, through the minutes, September 21st, 2020.
Um, who will we accept the minutes, uh, from, uh, select, uh, selectmen meeting, September 21st, 2020?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Whitman to approve the minutes in September 21st, 2020, regular minutes, seconded by Ms. McDonald. Any discussion? Pull the board, Ms. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Whit, Whit, Whitman, yes. Ms. Whitworth, yes. Votes in affirmative. September 21st, non-public.
I-
Make a motion that we approve the September 21st, non-public, and sealing all. Second. Motion made by Mr. McDonald to approve the non-public, sealing all minutes. Out divulging, seconded by Mr. Whitman. Was it?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? Pull the board, Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
This one worth, yes. Approval of the September 28th, 2020 budget meeting. No, I wasn't asked for approval of the budget yet. Don't get carried away there.
You lost me for a minute.
I thought I did.
That's what it sounded like. We approved the September 28th, 2020 budget minute.
Second. Made to approve the September 28th, 2020 budget works session, seconded by Mr. Michelle. Any discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Ms. Whitworth, vote yes. Vote is in the affirmative. Gentlemen, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? You have one item on it.
Motion that we approve the October 5th, 2020 consent agenda.
Second. Made to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Mr. Whitman. Motion was made by Ms. McDonald. Any discussion? I'll pull the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Whitworth, yes. Votes in the affirmative. Discretionary action, request appointments, discussion, majority vote required, nothing being there. Gentlemen, I'll eliminate it. At this time, folks, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into non-public session on these RSA 91 dash A, colon 3, paragraph 2, A and C. So move. I got it. Motion is made to go on a non-public session on these RSA 91 dash A, colon 3, 2, A and C, at
7:47?
7:47, seconded by Mr. McDonald. Any discussion? I'll pull the board. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Whitworth, yes. Folks, we are in a non-public session. When we come out, we will announce when we're out of non-public sessions.
Thank you.
Good evening. Call the Alton Board of Selectings meeting back to public session at 8:31. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion not to divulge the non-public session minutes underneath A and B second.
Motion is made by Ruben Wentworth not to divulge the information on public sessions underneath A and B second by Virgil McDonald. Discussion would be A, affect adversely the reputation of any persons other than a member of this board, and B, render a proposal affection ineffective. That is the reasoning behind it. Any other discussion? I'll pull the board. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes, votes affirmative. Gentlemen, if there's nothing else tonight, or ladies, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:32 PM.
To adjourn.
May Mr. Holt to adjourn the meeting 8:32, seconded by Paul Rochelle. Any discussion? Pull the board. Mr. Holt, Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes, vote is affirmative. We are now adjourned at 8:32. Thank you, folks. See you next week, same time for budget.